So, my lords, we're at page 182E of the bundle, looking at paragraph 82, and what the Court of Appeal said about the planning system. And, my lords, my submission is that the Court of Appeal was wrong to think that the planning system provides a satisfactory way on its own of controlling unablely conduct by visual intrusion. My lords, we accept that the planning system is quite good at determining what buildings should be built. Planning officers are specialists in the built environment, and that when a planning authority is considering granting planning permission for the construction of a building, it's dealing with a fixed, known quantity. But the planning system does not provide a satisfactory way, at least on its own, for controlling unablely activities, whether due to visual intrusion or for any other reason. Every successful nuisance case is a case in which the planning system has not avoided or prevented an unablely activity which unreasonably disturbs the amenity of a neighbour's property. My lords, one problem is the planning system asks the wrong question. The planning system does have regard to the amenity effect of developments, but only as part of an overall public interest assessment. It's a point made, I needn't take you to it, by Lord Newburger in Lawrence and Fen Tigers at page 630, and also by Lord Sumption in that case, 643. Another problem is that the planning system gets to have a say over whether an activity that might disturb neighbours should be allowed, even as part of that overall public interest assessment, only if there's a development requiring planning permission. So it'd have nothing, for instance, to say about installing CCTV cameras, which is the subject of some of the visual intrusion cases. It would have nothing to say about developments permitted by the permitted development order, developments relating to a change of use, or it has nothing to say about established uses, existing lawful uses arising from use for four years for a dwelling house or ten years for anything else. Even if it gets a say because there's something involving a development requiring planning permission, an issue might be missed, as happened in this case. And one reason that might happen is because those who are most affected by an activity might not be involved in the planning process. So in this case, when planning permission was granted for the Blavatnik building, the occupiers, the neo-bankside flats, were not involved in the planning process because the flats had not been sold. Even if an issue is identified, it might be difficult to predict exactly how harmful the activity might be to the amenity of neighbouring properties. And one factor in this case which would have made it difficult to predict the extent to which the viewing gallery would harm the amenity of the flats is the impact of technology. Since planning permission was granted, people now have, most people have, high smartphones with high-quality cameras capable of taking photographs and filming. Another problem is that even if something's actually contrary to the planning regime, those who would be affected by unablely conduct cannot take enforcement action. Only a planning authority can do that. In relation to paragraph 83 on page 182E, in relation to the first sentence on paragraph 83, I'd remind you that there is flexibility in the law of nuisance at the remedial stage. So the Court of Appeal refused an injunction in Miller &amp; Jackson, the case to do with cricket balls being struck into a neighbour's property, and in Lawrence and Fen Tigers, the case about the motorsport stadium, the Supreme Court, having held there was a nuisance, remitted the issue concerning the appropriate remedy back to the High Court with a direction that the public interest was relevant to the available remedy. So that concludes what I have to say about whether the usual controls work in visual intrusion cases and whether the planning system provides a satisfactory alternative for controlling unablely activities. If I could turn to the final part of the third and final of the points made by the Court of Appeal, which relates to Article 8 of the European Convention. We say that the Court of Appeal was wrong to hold that Article 8 provides no sound reason for holding that an activity causing a visual intrusion, along with all other types of activity, can be a nuisance. And for that, we rely upon what the House of Lords held in Wainwright and Home Office as explaining the way in which Article 8 can impact on the development of the common law. So if your lordships could turn to page 1121, divided 32, volume 3. Sorry, I missed that page. So it's page 1121, thank you, it starts at. So as your lordship is probably aware, the question was whether strip-searching a mother and son for drugs on a prison visit before the enactment of the Human Rights Act was unlawful. The trial judge held that the claim succeeded because he held that strip-searching included the trespass to the person, and the trial judge also held that the law of tort should give a remedy for any kind of distress causing an infringement of the right to privacy protected by Article 8 of the European Convention. So in effect, the trial judge thought that tort should provide an overarching privacy tort. If we could turn to Lord Hoffmann's speech, with whose speech the other judges agreed, if we could go to 1134. So paragraph 16, he deals there with the famous book by Dean Prosser on the law of torts, very influential in the United States, where the author explains that the law in the United States has protected privacy by, in effect, establishing four torts rather than a single overarching tort. And in paragraph 18, Lord Hoffmann says, "The need for the United States to break down the concept of invasion of privacy into a number of loosely linked torts must cast doubt on the value of any high-level generalisation which can perform a useful function in enabling one to deduce the rule to be applied in a concrete case. English law has so far been unwilling, perhaps unable, to formulate any such high-level principle. There are a number of common law and statutory remedies which may be said, in which it may be said that at least one of the underlying values they protect is a right of privacy." Common law torts include trespass, nuisance, defamation and malicious falsehood. There's also the equitable action for breach of confidence and statutory remedies under the Protection for Harassment Act 1997 and the Data Protection Act 1998. There are also extra-legal remedies under codes of practice applicable to broadcasters and newspapers, but there are gaps, cases in which the courts have considered that an invasion of privacy deserves a remedy which the existing law does not offer. Sometimes the perceived gap can be filled by a judicious development of an existing principle. The law of breach of confidence has in recent years undergone such a process. On the other hand, an attempt to create a tort of telephone harassment by a radical change in the basis of an action for private nuisance failed in Corrsangian and Bush. So this is the House of Lords confirming what the Lord Chancellor said when the Human Rights was enacted, that the common law would be able to adapt, would be able to protect Article 8 rights to privacy, not by creating an overarching tort of privacy, but by developing existing remedies, amongst other things in nuisance. That's something that the Lord Chancellor, in the debate on the Human Rights Act, mentioned. And here, Lord Hoffmann is envisaging that that could happen by developing the principles of such things as trespass, nuisance, defamation, malicious falsehood, and also that the legislature, the Parliament could play its part through statutes like the Protection from Harassment Act 1997 and the Data Protection Act 1998.
Can I just understand where we are in the structure of your argument? Is this a fallback argument?
Yes, I suppose you can say it's an additional reason to come to the conclusion that we're arguing for, but also it is a fallback.
Your argument this morning is that regardless, I mean, forget about Europe, in terms of English common law, what we're dealing with here is something which has a significantly damaging effect on the enjoyment of the ownership or possession of land, and isn't covered by either of the two principles in the Victorian, leading Victorian cases, and therefore it's a nuisance in terms of English common law. And I think it's really, if you don't get home with that argument, you would say in that event there's a gap in the protection of Article 8 rights, which the courts can fill by the development of a common law.
Exactly.
Is that right?
Exactly. So if contrary to our primary case, the common law wouldn't otherwise apply the usual test in visual intrusion cases, we say it's hard to think of a better case for developing common law principles to increase the protection of Article 8 rights in this case. Because, I mean, suppose we're wrong on what the common law would say otherwise, the position would be that the usual test in nuisance is subject to a controversial, incongruous, unprincipled and unjustified defence that benefits only those who unreasonably interfere with privacy in a particular way. That would be the position. And what better case could there be for developing the common law? It wouldn't involve distorting principles or straining principles, it would simply involve applying the usual principles.
What is said against you, I think, is that this would involve a pretty fundamental decoupling of the tort of private nuisance from the origins which my lord has just summarised and put to you.
So I mean, I'd ask this question. For the centuries in which nuisance protected the law of privacy to such an extreme extent as to prevent the creation even of a window overlooking neighbouring land, was it not a property tort then? And... My learned friends say, they say that privacy is not an aspect of the ownership of property that's protected by the law, they say something to that effect.
I have in mind EF 131 is the passage from the Conlon's case which I had in mind.
Sorry, 131, paragraph?
EF 131, paragraph 85.
Yes, I mean, that sort of point is made repeatedly in the case. So, yeah, said it's, essentially privacy is not an aspect of the, an aspect of ownership of land protected by the law. I think certainly as a property lawyer, I'd ask, you know, thinking about all the things you can bring a claim for in nuisance, the complaint about running of rothel because you are upset about the sight of prostitutes and clients going and forth from a neighbouring property, operating a hospital for infectious diseases, putting you in fear of infection, allowing travellers to gather, causing crowds to congregate, all of these things, you think as a property lawyer, what on earth does any of this have to do with aspects of the ownership of property? And so we find it difficult to really attach much meaning to that, but it just seems to be circular. I mean, suppose that the normal principle of nuisance is applied to visual intrusion cases, you'd ask the Tate, well, is privacy an aspect of the ownership of property protected by nuisance? You'd say yes.
But then I, as I understand the argument, what is said against you is that if one moves into the Article 8 considerations, then one's involved in a much more general balancing exercise, and necessarily that takes you into a consideration of whether or not the right balance has been struck.
So...
But that, no doubt, is a matter you're going to come back to.
Yeah, well, I can address that now. In Wainwright and Home Office, when Lord Hoffmann was suggesting in paragraph 18 that the common law can provide a vehicle for the protection of Article 8 rights through things like trespass, nuisance, defamation, malicious falsehood, he obviously didn't imagine that it could do so only if those causes of action perfectly replicated the Article 8 test. That there's, he obviously didn't mean that. It is impossible in a trespass action or a defamation action or a malicious falsehood action for the test for whether there's an infringement of Article 8 to be applied. What the, what Lord Hoffmann obviously had in mind was simply that it might be possible to develop the principles to provide greater coverage of privacy protection, protected by Article 8. In the same way that the judge thought the Article 8 rights were protected and promoted by the Protection from Harassment Act and the Data Protection Act, those statutes don't replicate the test for an infringement under Article 8. So it was a straw man, Mr Justice Mann didn't think that the law of nuisance had to replicate the Article 8 test, and we've never said that. And it would be ridiculous to think the law of nuisance should replicate the Article 8 test. All we're saying is that by removing from the usual, if this is the position, we say it's not, by accepting from the usual test, having an exception which is controversial, incongruous, unprincipled and unjustified, and only applies to privacy cases, the courts can develop the common law to give greater protection of Article 8 rights by removing that exception. Now, I would say it would just be extraordinary if, post the enactment of the Human Rights Act, you could have a cause of action concerning unreasonable activities that was subject to a defence that only applies if the activity is an invasion of privacy. It would be remarkable.
I wonder if necessarily one has to focus on invasion of privacy. Article 8 guarantees the right to respect for one's private and family life, one's home and one's correspondence.
That's right. If I could take your lordships to...
An Article 1 of the First Protocol guarantees the right to peaceful enjoyment of one's possessions.
Yes, if I could take you to page 230 of the bundle. So this is volume five of the authorities divided 56. So this is a decision of the European Court of Human Rights, Gomez and Spain. And, my lord, the point you were making is made in paragraph 53. Of course, the Article 8 is highly protective of privacy in the home. We've referred to McKennitt and Ash, I needn't take you to it, but page 1274, that was a case about whether writing a book describing the inside of someone's home contravened Article 8, and Lord Justice Buxton said the trial judge was right to say that that was almost as objectionable as spying into the home with a long-distance lens and publishing the resulting photographs. It is not dissimilar to what's happening in our case. And we don't, we think the Court of Appeal was wrong to say that we're sort of somehow unable to make this argument about how nuisance should look to give effect to Article 8 unless we can establish in our case there was a breach of Article 8. That was wrong. There's a number of cases in which it was impossible to say that the court came under a duty under section six of the Human Rights Act in a particular case, but nevertheless it was accepted that there should be some modification, or it was said by judges there should be some modification to the common law to give effect to Article 8 rights. Wainwright, Hunter and Canary Wharf, in which Lord Cook defended Corrsangian and Bush, partly by relying on Article 8, and also Dean East, Berkshire Community NHS trustees, were all cases with facts predating the enactment of the Human Rights Act.
Because I'm just thinking, you don't necessarily have to rely on the Human Rights Act at all. You could say, on conventional principles of the relationship between international law and the common law, that if a court is developing the common law, it may be a relevant consideration that a development would be consistent with the UK's international obligations.
Exactly, that's what Lord Cook said, exactly that, relying not only on the European Convention but also other international treaties. But in any event, we say there is, would be a breach of Article, there is a breach of Article 8 in our case. We don't think that's susceptible to elaborate reasoning. As your lordships are aware, the test is whether a person, what a person of ordinary sensibilities would feel, would they consider they had a reasonable expectation of privacy? That's the test in Murray, page 1534. And it's just obvious that this is not a difficult case. Three of your lordships have been, I think last week, concerned with a genuinely difficult case relating to whether there's a reasonable expectation of privacy in respect of being under investigation for a crime before any charge. That's a difficult case with good arguments on either side. This is not a difficult case, this is an obvious case. It is obvious that anyone of ordinary sensibilities would reasonably expect not to be subjected in their home every day of the week from morning till evening to observation, including photography and filming, from a large number of members of the public. No one of ordinary sensibilities subjected to that would say, this is just the sort of thing you need to put up with. And Mr Justice Mann held that the intrusion was such that a homeowner would reasonably regard as intrusive, paragraph 85, 209. And also the intrusion is a material intrusion into the privacy of the living accommodation, paragraph 88, 211. So, my lords, that's all I intend to say about Article 8, unless I can... So moving on to, so they're my submissions on the main issue raised by this appeal. Turning to the Tate's attempt to resurrect Mr Justice Mann's reasons for dismissing the claim, turning first to sensitivity.
This has been, I think, this is, am I not right in thinking this was the Tate's position before the Court of Appeal? But it was the Court of Appeal itself which raised the issue of whether nuisance struck at visual intrusion at all.
Yes, exactly. And the, our appeal from Mr Justice Mann's judgment, the essence of it was that he had applied the wrong test, he had asked whether the Tate's use of the viewing platform was reasonable, and that involved the same mistake as the misdirection in Bamford and Turley. And the Court of Appeal held that that was correct. And I don't think the Tate dispute that today, I think they accept that the judge did make that mistake. But what the Tate, it's a pretty odd submission, what the Tates say is that although the judge applied the wrong test, nevertheless, all his reasons that he gave in applying that wrong test, they nevertheless remain good reasons for dismissing the appeal. I think that's what they say. And the first of those reasons was to do with the fact that the flats have big windows. And so if we could turn to 230K. Paragraph 202, letter C. The learned judge, instead of applying the nuisance test to the facts as they are, he applied them to imaginary facts, which you can see from the sentence at C, on the basis of a hypothesis of an imaginary building with significant vertical and perhaps horizontal breaks to interrupt the inward view. So the question is whether the judge was right to determine whether the viewing gallery was a nuisance, not on the basis of the actual facts, but on the basis of that counterfactual assumption. And the judge's reason for doing so appears at page 230L, paragraph 205. I'd invite your lordships to read paragraph 205. And then a paragraph two hundred and eleven, a page 230M, at E, the learned judge said that a differently built but perfectly acceptable property would have had more privacy built in, or rather would not have had the same degree of exposure. So that is applying the nuisance test to a differently built but perfectly acceptable property. Now, this argument doesn't have anything to do with the fact that, whether it is a fact or not, whether the neo-bank side is especially sensitive to invasions of privacy by visual intrusion, it's a different argument. The argument is that if you've built or bought a building, which when compared to an acceptable alternative, is more sensitive to a nuisance, you can't complain about amenity harm exceeding what you would have suffered by that acceptable alternative. Put another way, it says that a claimant in a nuisance claim cannot complain about amenity harm to the extent that it arises from a feature of his property that he has chosen. Whether that feature is of an unusual character. Yeah, it's, this is a general proposition that has nothing to do with whether the property is especially sensitive. And there is no support for this principle in any authority, and that the principle is just obviously, would be just so unjust. We give the example of a factory emitting toxic dust onto the audience of an open-air theatre. It obviously shouldn't be a defence that an enclosed theatre would have been perfectly acceptable, obviously. The theatre did not assume the risk of having its audiences scattered with toxic dust by adopting its open-air design. And Justin, it's the same in our case. Our clients, by buying flats with big windows, did not assume the risk of being subjected to observation, photography and filming from a viewing gallery by hundreds of thousands of people a year. It's not part and parcel of what you must expect to put up with if you live in a flat with big windows.
There is some principle there, is there, though, that, I mean, if you do live in a flat with big windows, you do have to expect to put up with a bit more than if you live in one with small windows and-
So the answer, what? The answer to that is, so, step by step. First of all, there is a principle that in the law of nuisance, you ignore sensitive claimants or sensitive uses. So you disregard the fact that a claimant is sort of super-sensitive to noise, or is putting their property to a sensitive use. That principle does not apply to sensitive buildings. And we, that is supported by the authorities. I needn't take you to them all, there's just one I want to take you to, but they are referred to in paragraph seventy of our case. And as a matter of principle, that is right. We've got three reasons for saying that. But the first reason is that the justification for the rule about especially sensitive claimants and uses does not apply to buildings. And we see the justification for the rule in a case called Williams and Network Rail, page 1727. This is volume five divided forty-five. This was a case about whether Japanese knotweed could be a nuisance. So at page 1727, we're looking at the judgment of the master of the rolls with whose judgment the other two judges agreed. Paragraph forty-three, at F, the judge says, reflecting the fact that the cause of action is one for interference with property rights, loss of amenity value and the right to claim damages for it does not turn on any exceptional sensitivity or insensitivity of the person entitled to exclusive possession. What is relevant is the objective effect on the amenity value of the land itself. You're trying to figure out what is the impact on the land, and therefore you have to exclude from the, something you take into account, any particular sensitive use of the land or any particularly sensitive claimant. But that justification, obviously it doesn't apply to buildings. A second point is that reflecting the fact that the justification for the rule about sensitive claimants and uses doesn't apply to buildings, it would be hard to pin down the exercise that you were meant to carry out if it did apply to buildings. So, I mean, if you're trying to strip out the impact of a building being especially sensitive, what are you applying the nuisance test to? I mean, but the candidates, one candidate, you'd be looking at a building which, whilst susceptible to a nuisance of that kind, has not crossed the line into being especially sensitive, that's a possibility. Or perhaps you're considering a building of average sensitivity to that type of nuisance. Whatever the answer, that's not the exercise that Mr. Justice Mann carried out. He carried out the exercise of, he could imagine a building where there would be no nuisance, but which was perfectly acceptable. So it's a different, he was doing something quite different. But suppose you've, in principle, worked out what sort of building you're going to apply the test to, what on earth would that look like? And this is a point made by the judge in a case called Horne McAlpine. So if you could turn to page 834, volume two divided twenty-two. So this was a case where piling work had damaged a hotel, and the defence was that the hotel was structurally unsound, and so it was, it was a sort of sensitive hotel.
Should it be eight hundred and twenty-five you're going to?
It starts at eight hundred and twenty-five, and the passage I'd like to take you to is eight hundred and thirty-four, in the judgment of Mr. Justice Asprey. Top of the page, he says, he saw no justification for this hotel being physically shaken in its declining years to a premature and untimely end by an adventurous and powerful neighbour, even if the alleged analogy to do with sensitive uses were held to apply. If the defendant's contentions of law were really apocite, I would find it difficult to answer the query, when does an old building lose its ordinary right to protection against destruction? The prospect of all old buildings in London and elsewhere having, if they are to be rendered immune and permitted to continue in their existence, to be put into a condition capable of resisting not only all ordinary, but also all extraordinary forces that may be let loose to operate against them seems to me to be alarming. And the law of nuisance would be led into all kinds of difficulties in positing this hypothetical building to which the normal test would be applied. I mean, do you take into account historical standards when it was constructed, modern standards? Would it be an exercise to work out if the question about financial viability, whether things would get planning permission? And this is not a road that the law of nuisance has gone down, nor should it. My third point about this principle point is that what underlines all this is that the law of nuisance, when it comes to the type or design of buildings, it says that neighbours are required to take each other as they find them. And we think that's connected to the fact that the principles of nuisance are very protective of development.
Well, it's also compatible, consistent with good neighbourliness, isn't it? I mean, it's not very helpful to resolving disputes between neighbours if you accept as an argument, well, you should live in a different sort of building, or if you lived in a hypothetically different building, you wouldn't have to put up with what I'm doing.
Yeah. And we see this in play in Southern Tana, the House Lords case relating to noise caused by a lack of proper sound insulation. So the reason was there was no nuisance was because the ordinary use of a flat can't be a nuisance. It wasn't because the neighbouring flats were especially sensitive to noise because on their side of the boundary, the noise insulation was inadequate. But also, if you think about the neighbour making the noise, equally, the maker of the noise wasn't in a worse position because on their side of the boundary, the inadequate sound insulation meant that the normal use of the flat was more of a problem. So I mean, that's an example of how in two ways, the law of nuisance just says that neighbours have to take each other as they find them in relation to the buildings they live in.
But why doesn't that work both ways around? So in effect, if nuisance lies here, the Tate's use of its land will be stultified because they won't be able to use it as they want to. But if your clients can take reasonable self-protective measures, which would enable them to live in their property in a reasonable way, and the Tate to use its property in a reasonable way, why wouldn't one take into account that aspect of the case?
Well, I mean, that sounds to be the mistake Mr. Justice Mann made, of just conflating everything into a great reasonableness assessment.
Well, I'm not sure it is, if I may say so. In the case you've just looked at, there are quite a few examples given of premises which were being used for particularly sensitive operations, and it was said that that couldn't have the effect of increasing, of imposing obligations on a neighbouring proprietor, which wouldn't otherwise have existed. And my lord's point might be put in terms that by choosing to live in flats of this particular character, you're effectively casting an obligation upon the Tate, which wouldn't have existed if you had lived in an ordinary flat. Or if you had taken ordinary steps to protect your own privacy, if you choose to live in a goldfish bowl.
Okay, okay. Three things about that. First of all, my lord, Lord Sellers's point, that was to do about protective measures. That's to do with being able to put up net curtains, that sort of thing. It is firmly established by the authorities, which we cite, paragraph seventy-three of our case, page one hundred and four and one hundred and five of the bundle, that in the words of Winfield and Jolowitz textbook on tort, a claimant is not required to remedy the defendant's wrong by foregoing the right to enjoy his property to the full.
Right, but my point was directed to whether it is a wrong.
Yes. You're rather begging the question in that way of putting it.
Well, I'm saying that-
So if it's not a wrong because your clients can protect themselves, I'm not sure what scope there is for that principle.
Well, I'll put a point on things like curtains, that Mr. Justice Mann's reasoning went against a lot of authorities, and it would be odd in a nuisance case if a defendant was entitled to use his land in an ordinary way, even if that seriously harmed the amenity of the claimant's property, but a claimant faced with an interference was expected not to use his property in anything other than a normal way.
But I mean, why isn't reciprocity at the heart of nuisance? Indeed, one might say, even going back to the early Victorian cases, that's what was being emphasised in those cases, that reciprocity is the core principle. Your clients want to enjoy their property in a particular way, the Tate wants to enjoy its property in a particular way. Your clients want to rely on the law of nuisance to stop the Tate from doing that, but why shouldn't the principle of reciprocity look at whether there are reasonable intermediate means which allows both sides to enjoy their property to a reasonable degree on both sides?
It's quite true to say that a high level of generality, reciprocity and reasonableness are the governing principles, but they're given effect to, through the principles we've been looking at in this case, and that they don't involve what your lordship seems to be suggesting, what Mr. Justice Mann did, some great general debate about reasonableness, that the principles are quite hard-edged. And applying those principles to this case, as the Court of Appeal held, if a visual intrusion can be a nuisance, there is a nuisance in this case. So I mean, in terms of its detailed principles, they are not as your lordship is suggesting.
But I mean, in the sense, you're arguing on the one side not to have a hard-edged principle, because the Court of Appeal said, well, let's have a hard-edged principle that visual intrusion just won't be counted or capable of being a nuisance at all. But you're saying, no, no, you have to look at intensity and the particular circumstances in which that arrives. So one moves away from a hard-edged principle on that side. But if you're going to do that, what would be wrong with taking account of a degree of latitude on the other? Because after all, what your clients are trying to do is to stop the Tate from using their building as they want to do, in order to find a point in the middle where both sides get something of what they want.
I mean, it's contrary to the principles of nuisance as they've been applied for 160 years. The concrete principles are the ones I've been referring your lordships to. You ask yourself, is this an ordinary use of land? If it's a non-ordinary use of land, it's a nuisance if it seriously harms the amenity of the neighbour's lands. They're the principles. But there is no scope within there for what Mr. Justice Mann did, engaging some sort of free-ranging debate about reasonableness.
I mean, how does one actually test what is an ordinary use of land? And you say you'd be perfectly happy to have a café up on the terrace looking down. I mean, a café is an ordinary use of land generally in that locality. But what's the test for what is an ordinary use of land?
Well, I mean, it's a question of judgment. There will be grey areas. If the question is- If the question is, and as I say, a number of occasions, I've referred you back to what Bramwell said in Bamford and Turley about brick building for the purposes of creating bricks to build a house. He said that was using land in an exceptional manner, not unnatural or unusual, but not the common and ordinary use of land. So in this case, if you're asking, is a viewing gallery the common and ordinary use of land in that area? It's not. The common and ordinary use of land is offices, flats, restaurants, cafes, that sort of thing.
And an art gallery as a large tourist attraction?
A viewing gallery, there's only, how many in London? Half a dozen. A viewing gallery can't be said to be part of the ordinary use and occupation of land and houses in that area. It's the precise reason that it attracts half a million visitors a year that it's not the common and ordinary use of land. But I mean, you're right to say that these are, how you apply these tests is a question of judgment.
I'm sorry to press you on this, but I mean, why, when you're looking at something which is in itself somewhat unusual, a high-profile tourist attraction, art gallery, can't one say, and making it additionally attractive to the public by installing a viewing gallery so you can look out as well as look at paintings inside, isn't part of the ordinary use?
I mean, it'd just destroy that. It would involve turning pretty much anything into a common and ordinary use and occupation of land. It really would. I mean, if something like a viewing gallery, there's how many in London? Maybe half a dozen? And you can see what the principle is there to protect. It is to allow people to use their properties in an ordinary way. So it's meant to protect flat owners who want to watch TV, listen to music, run the bath, all those sort of things, mow the lawn. But to catch activities that are outside of the ordinary use. And a viewing gallery must fall into that category.
I mean, I can see that when you're looking at, you know, the run-of-the-mill use of properties, flat owner and flat owner. But, you know, sometimes properties are used for other purposes. I mean, one thinks of the viewing platform in the Victoria Park case. I mean, landowners usually want to be able to develop their land in ways that they think are valuable to them and their customers.
If you treat the viewing gallery as a common and ordinary use and occupation of land, pretty much everything is. And you'd be getting rid of most of the law of nuisance.
Yes, I see. Thank you.
Looking at the other side of the equation, the Victorian cases discussed by Mr Justice Asbury talk about a nuisance as being something which would interfere with the ordinary enjoyment of life. And your clients' use of the winter garden area of that flats, which seems to be the real focus of the complaint, isn't an ordinary way of living?
Well, that's not the focus of the complaint. That is part of it, but the the problem is not only looking to the winter gardens, but also into the living and dining area. And in respect to the winter gardens, I mean, the treatment of the winter gardens is really all about planning policy. So what planning policy says is generally you need to have outdoor amenity space. But in inner-city areas, you're allowed to substitute outdoor amenity space for sort of quasi-indoor amenity space. So it's all just bound up with planning policy. And I'd suggest it has nothing really to do with the issues on a nuisance claim.
Why do you say a café at whatever story level it is, is an ordinary use of land?
Well, because on the South Bank, there's cafes everywhere. There's restaurants, cafes everywhere. There's also
So the physical level doesn't matter, is that right?
How do you mean the physical?
Well, I forget which story the viewing platform is on, but when you're talking about ordinary use, are you just looking, I'm trying to get a sense of what counts as ordinary?
You're right to say, it's difficult to give, it is a test where there will be grey areas. It is essential to keep most claims in nuisance alive. I'd say a viewing gallery is certainly outside of that. But you're right to say it is a relatively imprecise test that will require judgement on the part of a judge.
Yes, right. Thank you.
More generally, in terms of the windows, summarising what I say about the question about the big windows, which are different from the questions about the question about the net curtains, on the big window question, so I make three points. First of all, as I've said, the judge's reasoning has nothing to do with the flats being especially sensitive to property. He's making a different point. And it is a point that is obviously wrong and has no support in the authorities. Namely, that if somehow you consent to a feature of your property, you can't complain about harm a nuisance arising from that feature. The only words in the judge's reasoning relating to the, could be said to relate to the flats being especially sensitive, is in paragraph two hundred and eleven, page two hundred and thirty M, where he starts the paragraph by saying that the claimants are occupying a particularly sensitive property. But there's no sort of development of that idea. And that isn't the basis for the judge's reasoning on this point. And if you were asking yourself, I mean, let's suppose for the sake of argument that the principle to do with especially sensitive claimants and uses does apply to buildings, let's assume that. Would it apply to this case? As I said, there's no exploration of that in the reasoning because that's not the basis of the reasoning. But is it the case that the appellants are occupying flats that are especially sensitive to nuisance by visual intrusion, judged by the standards of the locality? And the answer to that question is obviously not. As your lordships will be aware, in both residential and commercial buildings over recent built in, over recent years, floor-to-ceiling windows are commonplace.
So are curtains inside them. The judge at two eleven, you know, makes, I mean, you say it's obvious. The judge makes a contrary finding at two eleven. I consider this to be a case in which the claimants are occupying a particularly sensitive property which they are operating in a way which has increased the sensitivity.
If you look at the reasoning as a whole, the basis of the reasoning is not that the property is especially sensitive, that there is no, as I say, elaboration or reasoning supporting a decision on the basis of it being a particularly sensitive property. And in my submission, it obviously isn't. Particularly in that locality, whether you're talking about residential buildings, including for instance, the tower to the south side of Blackfriars Bridge, one Blackfriars or other commercial or residential buildings, as I say, floor-to-ceiling windows are commonplace. So the claimants are living in a perfectly normal building. But also, there's another point, which is if you're going to ask yourself, are the flats especially sensitive to nuisance by visual intrusion? You can't just focus on one feature of the flats. You've also got to focus, or look at, where the flats are situated. And the appellant's flats, they're situated right up in the air, above the thirteenth floor and above. And they're situated a long way from neighbouring properties. Over thirty metres, that's which is a much greater distance than the planning system, for example, would consider there is an issue in respect of overlooking between neighbouring properties. That's at paragraphs four and sixty of Mr Justice Mann's judgment, page one hundred and ninety-one and two hundred and four of the bundle.
But I mean, I wonder whether one shouldn't read two hundred and eleven together with two hundred and fifteen, as I think you invited us to do, to say that the judge is looking at how other properties might have been designed as part of a test to see whether this is a case in which the use to which the defendants want to put their land, I'm reading from two hundred and fifteen second sentence, is something that the claimant might be expected to put up within the relevant environment locale. And so he seems to be saying, well, one could perfectly reasonably accept that people can live in properties which wouldn't be unduly affected. And there are measures that your clients can take that would essentially put them in that same position. That being so, why should the court of action in nuisance in effect sterilise this particular use of the Tate's property that they want to put their property to?
Because, as I keep saying, that is not applying the test. It's not applying the principles of nuisance. That is making the judge's mistake of saying, well, nuisance is all about the reasonableness of land. Let's engage in just a complete freewheeling question about what's reasonable. And that is contrary to the principles in nuisance for 150 years. You apply those principles, there is a nuisance claim in this case. And just if I could just finish off the point about the whether the flats should be in the event which is wrong, that the principle about sensitive claimants and uses extends to buildings, whether these are especially sensitive flats in respect of nuisance by visual intrusion. As I say, you have to take into account everything. Not only the windows which are normal, which are normal in this location at that time, but also the location of the flats. Right up in the air and a long way from any other property. Thirty metres. So, you know, if you put together both the, I'd say, normal floor-to-ceiling windows and the distance the flats are from any other property, both the street and also other buildings, the flats are not especially sensitive to nuisance. Consider, for example, all of those roads of terraced houses where you walk down the pavement and the sitting room of the terraced houses is within a few feet of the pavement. They're much more sensitive to nuisance by visual intrusion compared to that situated right up in the sky, thirty metres from any other neighbouring property.
Now, I should point out to you, Mr Weeks, you're overrunning your time for opening, but that's not a problem. It just comes out of your time for replies. Obviously, take us you wish.
So I have just pretty much drawn to a close. But just to finish by saying, I make all these points about whether the flats are especially sensitive and they're not. But that wasn't the basis of the judge's reasoning.
Standing back from it as well, I mean, the question is, even if you take account of the windows, everything else, you ultimately have to ask yourself, well, is this the kind of annoyance that people should just reasonably have to put up with as part of everyday life, as it were?
Exactly.
And it's a little hard to see, at least at first sight, why half a million people a year staring out into your house is something that's just an everyday sort of, you know, rough with the smooth.
Yes.
Whatever the size of your windows.
I mean, you can also test the question about whether the windows, they're especially sensitive flats in relation to a nuisance by visual intrusion by the fact that pretty much no other use of the Tate's platform on their extension would have been a problem. Their flats wouldn't be a problem for any other use of the Tate's extension. So how can it be said they're sort of especially sensitive and that's the cause of the problem? Is the Tate's, this particular use, the use of a viewing gallery, that is the problem? Not the size of the windows, particularly given the distances between the flats and the viewing platform? So they're my submissions.
Thank you very much, Mr Weeks. Mr Featherstone Hall.
Well, your lordships heard the thorning and to agree this afternoon have sustained assault on the reasoning of the Court of Appeal.
Mr Featherstone, I am very sorry. I've managed to lock myself out of my account by entering the password incorrectly too many times. It's completely my fault, but I won't be able to follow what you're saying, so I don't know if we can call for assistance. My apologies.
My lord Sells, I don't think that's something that any of us here can truthfully say we've never done ourselves.
Well, I'm covered in embarrassment and I apologise again.
My lords, can I divert from my submissions right at the outset merely to pick up the point that my lord Leggett mentioned, which is really in response to the repeated references by my learned friend to the apparently prejudicial point that there are half a million people who come up to this gallery and peer into the flats. In fact, the evidence before the judge, and one can see this from page two hundred and six, if your lordships would look at that, included two videos taken from the flats and looking onto the viewing platform. And presumably, the point of the videos was going to be to demonstrate just how active the activity was. Now, the first video was taken by one of the appellants, and that's dealt with in paragraph seventy-three on page two hundred and six. And the comment made by Mr Justice Mann was most of the people on the gallery knew they were being filmed. The other filming was longer and more subtle. It involved a small camera that had been set up in one of the flats by the appellant's expert and run for two days, including a bank holiday. And then the hard disk with that trial on was given to the judge who was invited to specific aspects of it. He was assisted by the expert's comment, which is reflected at the end of paragraph seventy-five on page two hundred and seven, as to how many people were on page two hundred and seven, as to how many people were shown on the film taking photographs. And he says, three lines from the bottom of seventy-five, a conservative estimate was two per cent. It could be four per cent. That still meant a lot of photographs. But then, of course, that didn't mean people photographing the interior of the flats. The judge's comment, we see reflected in paragraph seventy-six, was that it was difficult to tell what people were taking photographs of very often, particularly when camera phones were involved. All one can tell from a camera phone being pointed in a direction is that it's being pointed in a direction. And it's all rather vague, and one can't tell what specifically is being photographed. And in many cases, too, the judge comments at the end of paragraph seventy-six that one can see merely a pan by the photographer as the camera sweeps by. So he couldn't see, well, his comment, it's not possible to identify deliberate photography of the flat interiors in any of them. Now, that's what the two days' worth of video activity revealed. It's fair to say that the judge did conclude at the end of all of that that there was significant evidence of photography of the flats. But as one sees from the social media reports, which are in evidence towards the end of this bundle, and I won't waste your lordship's time with it, an awful lot of the comments one sees, particularly from the Instagram posts, was about the architecture of these flats, which was apparently very special. Richard Rogers designed with an exoskeleton and floor-to-ceiling glass, something worth photographing. So the proposition that all these five hundred thousand visitors to the viewing gallery were up there to peer into and record the interiors of the flats is unfair and wrong. Now, my lords, back then to where I was going to go, which was to deal with Milner and Friend's criticisms of the decision of the Court of Appeal. And Milner and Friend constructed a number of propositions. And I'll summarise them in this way. First, in English law, both by way of custom and possibly also the common law, there was a right to prevent overlooking and safeguard privacy. His second proposition was that the cases to which the Court of Appeal were referred on the subject dealt only with interference with rights of light. His third proposition was that the Court of Appeal was wrong to extrapolate from the rights of light cases, a principle that an activity causing a visual intrusion was incapable of being a nuisance. And then his fourth proposition was that there were numerous authorities supporting the view that the test in nuisance applies also to visual intrusions. Now, my lords, each of those points is wrong, and I'll show you, lordships, why that is the case. Can I preface my remarks with a general observation, which is not in our case, but which I think is self-evident, that the law, as it developed in England, was developed with reference to the way in which English soil was being developed over the ages. And the typical example given in the authorities was of a man who erects a mansion with two hundred windows overlooking his neighbour's land. So that's the example which is trotted out time and again. And the problems that that might cause. Now, there are two types of problem that might cause. One is the sheer overlooking from the two hundred windows in the mansion, and that happens immediately as soon as construction is complete. The other is a much slower burning problem. And that is the fact that as time goes by, and commonly the prescriptive period is twenty years, rights of light required in favour of the two hundred windows over the neighbour's land. And that has the very serious effect that the rights of light owner, now the mansion house owner, will be able to prevent the neighbour, whose land is overlooked, from building anything which interferes with those rights. Now, that's the general background, and I think none of that is controversial. But the way in which English law evolved to meet those two problems, the overlooking and the rights of light, really is quite separate. And it is fair to say that most of the authorities on the subject are concerned with the rights of light interference and not with privacy. But the reason for that was because it had become the settled law of England that there was no right of privacy. That proposition that there might have been a right to privacy is such an ancient one that one can't even find any reference to it beyond the historical footnote in any of the authorities. So the only thing left to fight over was the right to light. And can I, if this won't overburden your lordships, just whip through the authorities that make this proposition good? Most of them are in bundle one of the authorities. And can I start right at the beginning with Chandler, which is at page four hundred and thirty? So an eighteen-eleven decision of Mr Justice LeBlanc. Can I invite your lordships to notice the argument put forward for the defendant on page four hundred and thirty-one? He says, and this is about a third of the way down, just above the first, all your lordships won't have whole punches, it's about a third of the way down. Jervis for the defendant insisted that under these circumstances, the action could not be maintained. The plaintiff had only a right to so much light as he had appropriated by twenty years' enjoyment, and more than that was still left to him. And then here's the significant part. Though the defendant might not object to a small window looking into his yard, a larger one might be very inconvenient to him by disturbing his privacy and enabling people to come through to trespass upon his property. So that's the argument put forward on behalf of the defendant. And then the judge deals with it in the passage below the next major paragraph. He was of the opinion that the whole of the space occupied by the old window was privileged and that it was actionable to prevent the light and air from passing through this, as it had formerly done. That part of the new window, which constituted the enlargement, might be lawfully obstructed. But the plaintiff was entitled to the free admission of light and air through the remainder of the window without reference to what he might derive from other sources. His lordship likewise observed that although an action for opening a window to disturb the plaintiff's privacy was to be read of in the books, he had never known such an action maintained. And when he was in the common pleas, he had heard it laid down by Lord Chief Justice air that such an action did not lie and that the only remedy was to build on the adjoining land opposite to the offensive window. Now, that is a judge two hundred and ten years ago commenting on the state of the law as it then appeared to him. And the notion against that background that there were such things as rights to privacy under the common law is just not sustainable. My lords, I'll pass over Cross and Lewis, which is the next authority, which is to like effect, and go to Turner, which Milner and Friend took your lordships to this morning, starting at page four hundred and thirty-five. And this deals in terms, again, not merely with an interference of the rights of light, but also with privacy. And the argument, again, put on behalf of the defendant, one sees from page four hundred and thirty-six, about a third way down the right-hand column, was that the interference with the privacy of the defendants constituted an injury which the court would relieve against. So that was the assertion being made, and it was dismissed by the Vice Chancellor, who starts his judgment on page four hundred and thirty-six by saying, there is not so much doubt as to the principles upon which it is to be decided. And then he goes on to apply those principles. At page four hundred and thirty-seven, he expressly addresses privacy halfway down the right-hand column. He says, with regard to the question of privacy, no doubt the owner of a house would prefer that a neighbour should not have the right of looking into his windows or yard. But neither this court nor a court of law will interfere on the mere ground of invasion of privacy. And then he goes on, and a party has a right even to open new windows, although he is thereby unable to overlook his neighbour's premises, and so interfering perhaps with his comfort. So he's not addressing, quotes, mere overlooking. He is addressing overlooking of a quality that might interfere with his neighbour's comfort. And then we pass over Bamford and Turley and go to Tapling and Jones. And again, your lordships are taken to this. It's a decision of the House of Lords, starting at page four hundred and forty-six. It's another opening new windows case. And the relevant part for my purposes really appear across three judgments. It's not just the one to which your lordships were taken this morning. One can start with Lord Westbury, page four hundred and fifty-two, the chancellor. Four paragraphs down, so just below the, halfway down the page. He says, again, there is another form of words, which is often found in the cases on this subject, viz the phrase, invasion of privacy by opening windows. That is not treated by the law as a wrong for which any remedy is given. If A is the owner of beautiful gardens and pleasure grounds and B is the owner of an adjoining piece of land, B may build on it a manufactory with a hundred windows overlooking the pleasure grounds, and A has neither more nor less than the right which he previously had of erecting on his land a building of such height and extent as will shut out the windows of the newly erected manufactory. One goes from that, but noticing just a couple of things about it. This is, it's a hundred windows case. And the remedy being the right to erect a wall on your own land, which will stop the overlooking. But let's leave that judge and go to Lord Cranworth next, who picks up the same theme at page four hundred and fifty-four. Well, the only purpose of citing this, your lordships, is five lines from the bottom of page four five four. He merely comments, the opening of a window is not an unlawful act. So notwithstanding everything that goes with it, such as overlooking. And then finally, Lord Chelmsford, with his judgment, starting at page four hundred and fifty-six. And then the part rightly read out, your lordships, by Milner and Friend, is on page four hundred and fifty-seven. Second paragraph down, where he says, second line, it's not correct to say that the plaintiff, by putting new windows in this house, altering the dimensions of the old ones, exceeded the limits of his right. Because the owner of a house has a right at all times, in the absence of agreement, to open as many windows in his own house as he pleases. By the exercise of this right, he may materially interfere with the comfort and enjoyment of his neighbour. But of this species of injury, the law takes no cognizance. It leaves everyone to his self-defence against an annoyance of its description. And the only remedy in the power of the adjoining owner is to build on his own land and so to shut out the offensive windows. Well, that's what was established by the House of Lords in Tapling and Jones. And your lordships will note that perhaps extravagant reference to self-protection in the shape of building a wall where there is some form of material interference with the comfort and enjoyment of the neighbour. And my lords, we're not suggesting anything that radical in this case, of course. We're merely suggesting a judicial, judicious use of net curtains. It goes a little further than that in the authorities, my lord. We note in our case a reference to Dalton and Angus. And perhaps it's just worth referring to that for two purposes. One is to note it's relatively recent vintage in the context of all these old cases. It's an eighteen-eighty-one decision of the House of Lords. And it was one of those curious cases where the House of Lords heard the case and then embanked a panel of judges who would then write opinions for their edification. And those judges who were asked to provide opinions included Baron Pollock, Field Linley, about to become Lord Justice Linley, and then Master of the Rolls, and then a Law Lord, and four others. And questions were put by the House of Lords to those eminent judges. And what they then said about the matter referred to them is recorded in paragraph twenty-six of our case. And I commend that to your lordships, in particular what Mr Justice Linley said. I'll read this from paragraph twenty-six. There's the enjoyment of light coming across adjoining land and the enjoyment of the use of such land for support are in some respects entirely different. No use is made of a man's property by opening a window on other property near it. And a right not to be overlooked is not recognised by our law. And my lords, we also cite Gale, of course, the preeminent textbook in this area, which in round terms comments that there is no right to privacy and never has been. So that's the common law, my lords. It is completely unarguable that there has ever been, in any reported case, a record of a right to privacy or right not to be overlooked being upheld, no matter what the material discomfort that is caused by being overlooked. It was always down to the landowner complainant to put up his own wall. And the Victoria Park case is merely a modern illustration of the same thing. The ground in question was fenced to a large degree, and the remedy would have been for the landowner, whose land was overlooked, to increase the height of the fence in order to cure the problem that was being experienced. Now, so much for the common law. What Milner and Friend does is to allied the common law with the custom. And it is, we accept, the case that for some of the great cities, customs were temporarily incorporated under which rights of privacy were paramount. The reason that those were put into the customary law was because there was nothing to the same effect under the common law. And as the article which we cite at page two thousand three hundred and forty, and I won't take your lordships to it, a very authoritative article by Janet Lernard makes very clear, having trawled exhaustively through the county court records and rolls, was to the effect that this custom gradually fell away with the pace of development in the country. And eventually, the right to privacy, even under customs like that applicable in London and York, eventually vanished entirely. So, my lords, the right to privacy simply has not had a role to play at all in our common law, ever as far as one can see, and under custom, not for a very, very long time indeed. And that notwithstanding, Milner and Friend feels able to assert to your lordships that there was such a thing as a right of privacy. Well, not demonstrably so on the cases. And the analysis of the Court of Appeal on this point, which merely does rather more elegantly what I've just done to your lordships, was exactly right. So it's paragraph fifty-three of the decision of the Court of Appeal, where they say, despite the hundreds of years in which there's been a remedy for causing nuisance and the prevalence of overlooking in all cities and towns, there has been no reported case in this country in which a claimant has been successful in a nuisance claim for overlooking by a neighbour. That is demonstrably correct. Now, Milner and Friend goes from this unabashed to say that there are numerous authorities which do show that the right to privacy was protected. And the mixed bag which he produced this morning, two lordships, fell into two parts. The first part was the so-called watching and besetting cases. And the second part were the Canadian and Australian authorities. And neither of them, in my respectful submission, gets him home. First, as to watching and besetting. I think his proposition was that watching and besetting uses the word watching, and that must mean therefore that watching is something that is not allowed, something of that nature. It's a bit like saying that somebody who causes a nuisance by having a smoky bonfire is liable for striking the match that is applied to the bonfire, because without the striking of the match, you wouldn't have smoke. It's a nonsense proposition, with all due respect. Even the phrase watching or... Even the phrase watching or besetting makes it plain that watching is not a necessary part of the tort. It's one or the other, but what is absolutely key to a successful watching or besetting claim is that the watching or besetting should be done with a view to stopping the plaintiff doing that which he is lawfully entitled to do. So this came to its prominence, this particular tort, or cause of action normally statutory, in the days of trades union picketing, when what the plaintiff was being stopped doing was lawfully accessing its land. So it's a paradigm example of an interference with a right of access to land. It's not an exception to our case that there is, that nuisance can include watching and besetting even though there is no interference with the land. To the contrary, watching and besetting always involves an interference with the land, because it stops the plaintiff accessing or, in some cases, egressing his own property. So the numerous authorities which Malone and Friend cited on the point really came down to Lyons and Wilkins. That in itself is a watching and besetting case, where much attention was given to whether the watching and besetting was with a view to preventing, and that is the key distinction. And it has absolutely no parallel in our case, my lords. The judge expressly held that it was not the Tate's business to try and get lots of people up onto the viewing platform in order to watch and beset the flat owners. Absolutely not. It takes really quite strenuous steps to stop any photographing that it sees being carried on. So that's those authorities. They don't, Malone and Friend, the distance he wants to go. And then the Canadian cases he cites, they are all, I think, decisions not of the Supreme Court, but of others. It's worth perhaps just adverting briefly to one of them which he cited, which is Martin and Levine. It's, I'll just find the page number for your lordships, it's tab fifty-three from Malone and Friend's benefit, page one thousand eight hundred and ninety-six. Judgment of the Honourable Madam Justice Smith. And, lordships, remember this one. I think one of your lordships mentioned the fact, which is recorded in paragraph five of the judgment, that the unit contained several floor-to-ceiling windows. I think it was also on, well, it was on the ground floor, so quite easy to look into. And the complaint that was made was that Mr Levine had a daily routine of walking on the public pathway, and as he walked past the unit, he would stare into the living room windows in an intimidating fashion. He never smiled or spoke. He didn't make any threats or physical gestures. And this activity occurred between a hundred to two hundred times over the course of the following year. That was held not to be substantial enough to amount to a nuisance, even adopting the generous approach to nuisance which Malone and Friend does. The only other thing worth pointing out, I think, is the comment which I think one of your lordships seized on, that this was a case where the nuisance might have, such as it was, might have been prevented by curtains being drawn. And, my lords, that, of course, is something that will feed into my submissions perhaps tomorrow in due course. So the Canadian authorities really don't take Malone and Friend very far, they are simply authorities illustrating perhaps the law is developing in a slightly different way in that jurisdiction. And then, my lords, we have the Victoria Park and Reciti cases in Australia. Victoria Park, your lordships were taken to, but in particular the judgment of Mr Justice McTiernan, which perhaps was a curious choice. I'll take your lordships back to it. So it starts at page six hundred and sixty-six. High Court of Australia, so the highest court in that land, and five judges sitting, three of whom were in the majority, holding that there was no actionable nuisance. One of the dissenting two judges was Mr Justice, sorry, one of the judges in the majority was Mr Justice McTiernan, and your lordships were taken in particular to page seven hundred And about five lines down, this passage was read out to your lordships. If, even if, upon a comparison with other buildings and the locality, the structure holding this platform with its broadcasting equipment might be regarded as peculiar or unusual, Taylor had a right to have it erected, and it was not actionable for Taylor or his licensee to invade the privacy of the racecourse by looking at the racers from this vantage ground, citing Tapling and Jones. So much indeed appears to have been conceded by the plaintiff, for it does not claim a mandatory injunction for the removal of the platform from Taylor's land or for removing the broadcasting equipment from it. The relief which the plaintiff claims is in effect limited to an injunction restraining the broadcasting of any description of the racers. Now, that, and then I think Malone and Friend picked up the judgment again at the bottom of page seven hundred and ten. And then following down page seven hundred and eleven, about ten lines. It is conceivable that broadcasting may be made an adjunct to conduct constituting the actual nuisance of watching and besetting premises with a reference to Lyons and Wilkins, but ending, no facts approved to bring the broadcasting of which the plaintiff complains within the scope of the principle which was applied in that case. And I think there, Malone and Friend, ended his view of this particular authority. It's difficult to see from any of that how that can possibly be said to be support for the proposition that, in this case, the judges were effectively saying that overlooking was actionable, simply not the case. And of course, the other two judges in the majority were round in the condemnation of the principle that overlooking, even coupled with what was being done in that case, was remotely actionable.
I don't understand it to be the opponent's argument that overlooking is actionable, to just mean looking out of a window onto somebody's land.
Yes.
His point is that there's no difference in principle between the kind of annoyance that could be created by somebody playing the trumpet, and annoyance of somebody training a camera all day on your ground, and there's no reason to pick out nuisance caused by watching or filming from other nuisance that involves other senses like smell or sound. I mean, is there any difference in principle between those kinds of annoyance that justifies putting aside one altogether from the scope of the law?
Well, my lord, one first has to start with a right that's being infringed. There is no right that's ever been held by any court in this country which is based upon the right not to be overlooked or right of privacy, none. I mean, without that right, my lord, it's not, it's not right to go from there and consider whether there's a breach or whether there's interference with anything. One has to start with the right in the first place.
Well, you don't have a right not, for somebody not to play music next door, but if it reaches such a level of intrusiveness and annoyance, then it does infringe your right, which is to the enjoyment of your property. And the same is true, isn't it, of the cases where somebody sets up a camera that's filming your backyard day and night?
Yes, but that, my lord, that's simply never been held to be a right. If it had been held to be a right, it would have started fire development in this country. One really can't say the same thing of playing a trumpet. It's, in the end, my lord, I accept these are policy matters, but to say you can't overlook my land, and therefore you can't put up a house which has that effect, would have meant development in England would have been stopped in its tracks. That, my lord, I think is the distinguishing reason. In the hundred-window mansion, I doubt there was a trumpet player in every window causing a nuisance. Sorry, my lord, I don't mean to be flippant, but that's the difference. To say you can't put up your house in the first place because you will be able to overlook me, and I'm entitled to prevent that, is, as a matter of policy, not the way the law was developed in this country.
I totally accept you can't be stopped from putting up your house, you can't be stopped from setting up a music studio next door in your house or whatever. It's what you do on your land that affects your neighbour that can be a nuisance.
Well, my lord, yes, I accept that. And then one comes to, well, what should the complaining landowner do about it? And we know from Tapling and Jones that the remedy suggested was, well, put up your own wall, and that translates directly into the tape now. If you don't like it, then close the curtains, which you should have, or put up net curtains, and that will stop the nuisance. There is no comparator with somebody playing a trumpet. It was said by Mr Justice Mann, it's not the same as saying put in earplugs, because the noise continues, the noise affects your property, and putting in earplugs is A, inconvenient, and B, it won't stop the noise, which is the origin of the nuisance. But with being viewed, there is no comparator at all. Once you close your net curtains or use the winter gardens for their intended purpose instead of treating it as part of your living accommodation, the nuisance stops, it's just not there anymore.
Are you, but you're making that not just as an argument that that might be a reasonable way of countering the, preventing there being a nuisance in this case, but as a justification for saying there can never be nuisance by, which takes the form of looking?
Yes.
So you say, for example, do you, that the case where the lights came on every time somebody went out in the backyard and they had a camera permanently filming them there, that's wrongly decided?
No, and I don't say that, my lord, that's Reciti and Hughes. And there, my lord, I say the analysis of that should not have been in terms of nuisance, it should have been in terms of whatever the breach of privacy applicable law was. Today, that would be categorised as harassment, and there would have been a remedy under the Protection from Harassment Act nineteen ninety-seven. So that's the proper way of analysing it, my lord. So you don't try and squeeze that into nuisance just because it's offensive activity. You devise, you look to another remedy which is already there.
It's not a matter of squeezing it into nuisance, it's about explaining why something that does interfere very substantially with your enjoyment of your land should be incapable of being characterised as a nuisance.
Well, my lord, I repeat, it goes back to establishing a right not to be overlooked or interfered with by visual intrusion in the first place, and such a right is not known to our law.
Thank you.
Lords, I see the time, I don't know whether this would be a convenient moment.
If it's convenient for you, then it's convenient for us.
Of course, my lords.
Very well. We'll adjourn now and resume at ten thirty tomorrow morning.